We have one item on this session, and that's a presentation on the Banyan Hub. And we're going to have John Ward kick it off. Oh, look at that. Wow.
Can we dream about urban atmospheres that connect us to nature?
What's that?
Can we imagine merging aquatic activities in urban life? Can we combine natural elements and technologies to provide climatic comfort year-round? Can we create a flexible building that promotes entrepreneurship, citizen engagement, and digital interaction? Open Shore creates the framework to experience an urban wetland landscape. Enjoy the city while swimming. Discover a rainbow on a sunny day. Connect with others and get inspired. Open Shore proposal for West Palm Beach is based on the identification of opportunities, the definition of actions and strategies, and the achievement of key improvements towards a vision of a lively urban environment. Open Shore addresses West Palm Beach holistically, considering urban, cultural, social, economic, and environmental aspects. In order to connect the urban vision with a coherent design, we have to look into the different places and programs to carefully identify their potential. The new waterfront is an extraordinary opportunity to reconnect the city to the water, making good use of West Palm Beach's spectacular location. The Great Lawn, already a central piece in the city's urban life, will become the urban living room of West Palm Beach. The Meyer Amphitheater will be the ultimate space for great urban events and all kinds of cultural activities. The alleyways will undergo a rapid activation process, ranging from temporary interventions to the development of permanent structures to host new programs. The former Banyan Garage is reimagined as a new focal point for activities, attracting business and talent to create knowledge, cultivate culture, and foster innovation. Open Shore provides a set of tools to reimagine these places and positively shape the urban transformation of the downtown.
Afternoon.
Afternoon.
I wanted to take a couple of minutes before I introduce Belinda Tato, who's our architect, and get those of you up to speed on what got us here. We've shown this video before, but you didn't have that opportunity to see it. And this all started when we started thinking about what to do with the Banyan Garage several years ago. It's, by most estimates, pretty much reached the end of its lifespan. We can't really add but a floor or two more, according to the engineers, to it to add for more volume. The elevators have problems, on and on and on forever. So it's a building that's as useful, time is pretty much exhausted. So we started thinking about, what do we do there? Do we replace the Banyan Garage with another garage? Or do we start thinking about downtown in a much more holistic fashion, as the video indicated? And we also know that when we're looking forward now, and this is a forward-looking project, but as we're looking forward, we know that the use for garages and things like that is going to be reduced in years to come. And those garages that we have may be transitioned into another use. So as the automated car comes into more use, we'll see how that changes. So I wanted to, we started, there's a wonderful firm called the Van Allen Institute in New York that we got to partner with us on this. And Van Allen has this fabulous rolodex of great architectural firms that's literally worldwide. So when we put out the call for this, we initially started talking to them about, well, let's think about a new garage. And that didn't really interest them. They were more interested in looking at, how does West Palm Beach look at its relationship with the water and downtown and sea level rise and all of these things, our alleyways and a whole lot of downtown issues that we're faced with. So we put out an international competition, a call for competitors. We had 42, I think, responses from very significant firms. And it went through, we went through a whole process until October of 2016. And then we announced the finalists. We had two finalist architectural firms, Ecosistema Urbano that's presenting tonight, and Perkins and Will, another very significant firm. They both put up exhibits in March of 2016 out in the public, and the public got a chance to comment on them and talk about what they liked about them and what they didn't like, and give us good comments on that. And in May of 2017, we announced the winner, which is Ecosistema. We had a presentation here before the commission and showed you kind of the concepts of the things that they had in mind and the reason that we thought that they were the winners. So in July of 2017, this board authorized the CRA to start working with Ecosistema on the Banyan Hub, the alleyways, and the 314 Climatis Building. So that's when we got started physically doing things. And in September of 2017, we passed Resolution 1752, which authorized us to go ahead and start the development of plans for the Banyan, which we're now calling Banyan Hub instead of the Banyan Garage. So with that tonight, I'm pleased to introduce Belinda Tato. And Belinda's going to show you where we are in the development process for this. And I want to stress with you that this is, this is more than a concept, but less than anything finished. And obviously, everything will change. And the project is envisioned as a public-private partnership as well. And of course, when we get into that public-private partnership piece, obviously, the private sector will have input into how we do the building and the kind of assets that we have and that sort of thing. So just understand that what you're looking at tonight is strong conceptual developed designs, but things that will change. And we'll answer questions, of course, at the end of it. But with that, let me introduce Belinda Tato.
Before Belinda speaks, I just want to add, one of the cool things about all of the stuff that we've done with Ecosistema, with Van Allen, with Gell, with other folks that have come in and worked with us, they're all saying the same thing. And that is, you know, we need to be able to bring the water to the people. We need to connect our downtown, our waterfront with the core of our downtown. And they're all talking about the same thing, which is amazing, that we would have so many disparate groups of people coming in and telling us the same thing. So, thank you. Welcome, Belinda.
Thank you very much. Okay. Everybody, thank you very much for this opportunity. It's a pleasure and an honor to be presenting the project in front of you. And as John mentioned, it's been, this is a result of a few months of work. This is a result of the schematic design. And also, as Mr. Ward was mentioning, this is not a final thing, this is kind of a starting point. And I hope you get inspired as we did through the process. So one of the things that we thought it was amazing is to see again, you know, this kind of very close connection to the water, but also this kind of disconnection from the water. So we like this opportunity to look at the Banyan Garage as an opportunity to kind of redefine and to create a kind of an iconic intervention in the city center. So there is a number already of beautiful and exciting places, but we thought the Banyan Garage could be, as it was part of the brief of the competition, so it was not our ideas, it was kind of the prompt for the competition, to do something much more exciting than just a parking garage. So we thought, you know, what could happen in this building? Because again, it was very open-ended, so the question was, what kind of programs could be happening here? So we thought it could be a place for living, for shopping, for working, for parking your car, but also all of these kind of public activities that usually take place in the public space. So we like this idea of a building that was hybrid and flexible and a building that could operate 24 hours seven for different kind of users. One of the things that I think was very important was to think of the building as a kind of a hub, and that's why we call it a Banyan Hub, a place for gathering people together, gathering people from the different communities, not only the users from the downtown, but give it a reason so that it could really be relevant to everybody in West Palm Beach. So this idea of a building that would operate seven days a week and a kind of iconic representation. Another important feature that we appreciated as outsiders, I know people complain very much about the hot summer over here, but actually, I see the amazing 10 or nine months a year that you can really be outdoors. And we really kind of explored these dimensions of how we can provide climatic comfort in the public space to make it really relevant in people's lives. So the building is operating with that kind of concept, and there is a number of public spaces that we'll go through in a second. So we also, of course, is our responsibility today to look at architecture in a sustainable way. And again, that's not a kind of, it's not an option anymore. So every feature and every kind of design decision was very basically based on that. So we are thinking and designing a building that really aims to achieve a lead, gold, or platinum certificates. And again, not only for the building itself, but also to become an example of how to operate in this particular climatic zone, because it is possible and it's feasible to kind of minimize the energy consumption for air conditioning. So we had a number of possibilities and technologies that were put in place to really make the building as efficient as possible. So we're thinking about natural evaporative cooling, but also about natural ventilation and incorporation of smart monitoring tools. So the building has a kind of, as I was saying before, it's a hybrid program building, so it's got different kind of programs. So the urban plazas, retail, mobility hub, support space, residential, rooftop pavilion, YMCA, and a business hub. So in the pre-designed document that we delivered back in December, I believe, we did different iterations of how these programs could come together. And this is the one that we fell together with the people from the CRA and the people that we discussed. This could kind of function very well because of the location and the kind of the privacy that also the residential portion requires. So these are the urban plazas. There are three of them, one at the ground level, then there is another one, which is the elevator one, and then the rooftop terrace. And they're all connected by this escalator and a helical ramp. So it's about bringing this public dimension inside the building. So these are different features that the public spaces have. There's retail and catering, there is an event pavilion. We heard and we learned how successful the lake pavilion is, that is fully booked like for the next two years. So we were given this idea of how can we incorporate something that is similar on top of the building, the support space, and also space for temporary events and public space. The ground floor is permeable, it connects to the alley that is behind, and it gives the opportunity for pop-up markets and a new open plaza on Olive Street. So this is just a very schematic diagram that shows all the different possibilities and how the different things come together. The elevated urban plaza, which is a flexible multipurpose space, and it incorporates a digital interactive plaza and a shaded outdoor space, again with this helical ramp. And these are some images of how we imagine this kind of outdoor but sheltered space that could operate, again, with different kind of events, with permanent venues, but also with temporary or occasional events. And then the rooftop terrace, and that has amazing views, I can imagine. And there is this idea of having the pavilion for public and private events and with bio-climatic comfort. So this is the configuration. So we imagine that you could come and have your wedding with scenic views overlooking the waterfront and taking advantage of the beauty of the site, which is very special. The other thing that was very important was to understand the importance of the parking garage, but also, as John was mentioning, this is something that probably will be shifting over the years, but now we have to respond to the actual demand. So one of the requirements from the CRA was to keep the same number of parking spots. But at the same time, we wanted to, again, to incorporate all these new programs. So we were thinking of incorporating an automatic parking system, because it reduces the amount of space required for the same number of cars. So there is a number of other uses related to mobility. So we are planning for a car sharing station, a bike sharing station, bike storage and repair, and so on. But we, again, we were requested to maintain the same number of parking spots, but we wanted to reduce the space dedicated to that, so we could really use that space for other programs, as we were mentioning. So the automatic parking system, it can reduce up to 27% the space that can be used for business, residential, or retail. And it has very clear advantages for the three kind of stakeholders, for the developer, for the users, and for the environment. It reduces the amount of money that is required for development and operating activities, and also it reduces the amount of time that requires people for parking. In terms of environmental impact, it reduces the exhaust emission, the material and energy. It creates the possibility of a denser development, but also it eliminates the risk of accidents, theft, and vandalism, as these facilities are completely enclosed, they're not accessible to the public. So they're really kind of safe, very safe. So we made a strong research on different examples, both in Europe and in the U.S., and we were in contact with different companies all over the country that have been sharing with us their technology, their different examples. And it is great, because there is a number of examples operating right now, both in Florida, but also in New York and New Jersey. So there is facilities can be visited and can be kind of seen in place. They're very, on the one hand side, they're very sophisticated, but then on the other side, in terms of infrastructure, they're kind of simple, because there's this robotic pieces that just go underneath the cars and operate them, like move them around. The other important, the other thing that was very important was to make the building not look as a garage. So there is, by code, we are required to produce an active use line, but we're actually wrapping up completely the parking garage, so that from the outside is a kind of a commercial space. And I think that is very important, because again, probably this is going to change in the future anyway, but still, we need to provide a kind of an active and a kind of a lifeful building right now. The other program is the business hub. So the whole idea was to create two floors with fully equipped offices, and that combine the indoor space with the outdoor areas. And they're both connected by a ramp with a green courtyard, and it's a space that aims to bring some startups and entrepreneurs, considering the city's university city, so probably there is this demand. So this is the idea of this kind of outdoor space, but it's a kind of cool area where people can hang out and meet informally, but also work. The other program is the YMCA. It is also, we allocated two floors for them, that add up to 78,000 square feet. And although we don't know what their final layout could look like, but we already studied and talked to them and see what kind of features they usually introduce in their YMCA's. So we thought it was very interesting to have outdoor and indoor facilities, a swimming pool, sports cart, a court, running track, and a childcare facility, which actually is a very kind of trendy feature that allows parents or adults to take care of themselves a little bit, while their kids are kind of completely taken care of. So we deliver, again, we have laid out how these programs could fit into them, into the building. We like this idea of having a running track wrapping up the building and being able to be running, again, looking at the waterfront. But we also imagine the possibility of being swimming overlooking the lagoon. Another important component that I was also kind of emphasized by the CRA was the housing, the housing for the workforce. So we were requested to explore the possibility of introducing housing from micro units to more kind of middle-sized units. So we thought that was also something that could be very critical for the success of the building, because we think, you know, it is great to have these different kind of users and a building that is already operating because of the housing, but also it's a kind of a very special housing building, because there's so many other amenities. So we were planning to have shared amenities, outdoor and indoor facilities, a green courtyard. The housing typologies that we're considering right now is between 500 to 1,500 square feet. Of course, this portion of the building has amazing views of the waterfront. And of course, it will have a dedicated communication corps for privacy issues. So this is a schematic plan of how the units could be assembled together. So we explored three different typologies. The first one is the micro unit, the second one is a duplex unit, and the third one is a two-bedroom unit. Again, this is very much a starting point that will be discussed with the developers and with the city, to see if these are the more suitable kind of typologies that fit the kind of the current demand. But we also like to incorporate some kind of common space within that building, so we could imagine that people could gather together. Because of the, some of the units are kind of small and reduced, it would be nice to have some kind of common amenities. So we imagine having a space, a terrace that is collective to, again, to have a barbecue and looking at the waterfront. In terms of management, it was also a request, and it makes all the sense, because of the richness of the building, to create a public-private partnership. And there is a number of benefits for this, and I think it makes all the sense, because also, again, because of the different programs that come together. So so far, as we imagine, we imagine that the load of the public could be up to 40%, and the load of the private would be around 60%. And we already kind of made an estimate of the cost that could be, this could be kind of tentative numbers. We've been looking at how the construction market has been operating in the area, and we've been taking some examples. So the mobility hub could be like around $10 million. The public investment for the urban plaza, rooftop, and support could be around 18, and the private for residential, business, retail, and YMCA could be around 54. So that adds a total of $83 million. So this is about it. I'm sure you have questions or comments, and I would be happy to take them. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Excellent. We appreciate that. Okay, questions from Belinda or John? Commissioner Neering.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for your presentation. Actually, Mr. Ward could probably answer this. And thanks, your last slide around the preliminary costs was very helpful. I think it's a very bold starting point that is obviously going to require major public-private, you know, partnerships. What's the timing on that in terms of, and I'm sure we'll get to that, but in terms of...
Well, we've actually already started talking with various developers. I'm meeting with another capital company first of November. So we've got, we've had interest from the private sector already. We had a fellow in town Friday, this last Friday. So these folks are interested in public-private partnerships. It ends up being essentially a long-term, you know, lease with them. And the actual operations of most of the building would be, we would rely on our private sector partner to do that. She showed, I think, the cut of the funding indicated something in the neighborhood of $50 million from the private sector. You'd carve out of that the YMCA. I think we've indicated 78,000 square feet. We've had a number of conversations with them, and in fact, not only have the YMCA local operators been in to talk with us, but they've also had their consultant firm that designs literally hundreds of YMCA's around the country in to look at this set of plans as well, and try and give us an idea about the kind of footprint that they would want to have. So, you know, they're indicating something between 50 and 75,000 square feet. So depending on where they come in, they'll be responsible for funding that. So.
Other questions? Give us your shelf.
Thank you, Mayor. To echo Commissioner Neering, it really is, it is a bold step forward, and I'd like that we're looking into the future. And I was just curious, as we're looking at this building, to clarify, the proposal is for not a retrofit, it's for a new building.
It's a completely new building, absolutely.
Okay. And in that, when we're looking at the potential partnership, public-private partnership, is the end goal to be a revenue generator for the city long-term? Is it for the city to eventually phase out of the partnership and turn it completely private? Do we have any idea of what a long-term goal would be?
Well, typically, these things are 75- to 99-year long-term leases with the partners. So, you know, we would still, we'd have to negotiate that. But certainly, it would be a revenue generator.
And we would run the parking.
Well, that's what I was about to say, Mayor. It's our anticipation that we'd operate, for instance, the parking component. We would be responsible for operating the three public plazas. She showed you the example of the glass pavilion up on the roof. We know right now that you can't, you can't book a weekend in there for a wedding reception or something like that for the next two years. So is that an asset that we'd want to have absolutely? And imagine it 10 floors up in the air. So we think that's a financial generator, yes.
And just to follow up to that, when we're talking about phasing things in and keeping parking for the time being, are we talking about potentially building the entire building and then changing around the usage as time goes on and needs change throughout the city? Is that what we're talking about when we're talking about phasing in?
Be clear on the parking component. We're talking about an automated garage, one that you come in and your car gets on a little platform and away it goes. You literally turn the car off and step out of it, and your car goes away. So you do not go and park it and all that sort of thing. All of this, oh, there's crime in garages and all that sort of thing. That's not a conversation anymore.
And do you also think that they can park closer together, because you don't have people getting in and out?
Well, that's the key. There is no damage to the car. There's, again, it cuts down on the emissions and all the rest, that sort of thing. But the good thing is that these units, as she showed you in the drawing, we're going to enclose that inside the building, and then we can retrofit that later as the need for parking gets reduced. The challenge of designing something today and knowing the future is that you know 30% of those cars are going to go away. So the question is, will we need them in the future for the other, you know, in your condos, they give you one space. So we've got a lot of folks today are parking in our garages for their second car. Will we need that second car? Will it even exist? And you can go on to, this is, typically, there's steel rack systems, and you can remove the racking system and retrofit the building for something else. I'd even also thought about, one of the challenges in downtown living is storage stuff. You know, you move from a big house into a condo, and you've got all this stuff. So it's entirely possible to put those storage units on these kinds of shelving rack systems and have a used storage system in part of it. So there are a lot of possibilities, and the key to designing something like this is the flexibility of it. We think it would be a very flexible system and real workable.
Thank you.
The other conversation, just on the parking garage too, just as a remark, the conversation is always, well, people are not used to it, and, you know, they're not used to pulling up, and how do I get out of my car and away it goes, and that sort of thing. So you'd have to have kind of a valet. And we're designed, we would design the building with a great lounge on the first floor, and it would have the valet that would help people get in and out of their cars and retrieve them and everything like that. And I have to, I want to point out to you that no matter what system we put in our garages today, the garages that we have today, the precast concrete ones we have, no matter what kind of ticketing system we put in there, we're paying two or three staff folks to stand around next to the machines and put their tickets in for them today. When you leave today, there'll be somebody standing beside the machine to do that. So the expense of staffing for something like that is no more than we're spending anyway, and we think that the ultimate product is a lot more.
Commissioner James?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the presentation. Talk to me a little bit about the housing component and what we're contemplating. Is this workforce housing? Is it rental? Is it condos? What do we, and will it be developed by the private sector? What's the model there?
Commissioner, the vision is probably rental as opposed to condo, and it's certainly workforce. Every bartender, barback, or anybody that works waiting tables downtown needs a place to live. This gives you a close-in, easy-to-walk-to housing. And again, with envisioning like three different sizes of units, starting with 500-square-foot units, which is pretty small, and then Belinda's gone out of her way to have a, have common areas that would give you gathering places and things like that, so you could physically get out of that little cracker box, 500 square feet. And actually, I lived in an 800-square-foot apartment when I moved to West Palm Beach, and I used to say I had to go outside to change my mind, and it was true. So you do need to have some flexibility in these spaces, and we did that, so.
I can attest to that.
Yeah. So yeah, the vision is, I think, rental.
I would think though, John, wouldn't we want it to be mixed? Wouldn't we want workforce and market rate, both?
What will, what will happen, Mayor, is that as we're developing this, depending on the deal we make with them, it'll change. We'll have a developer come in. I've already had two developers that said, oh, I wouldn't put the housing component into it, because it just complicates things. But I think it complicates it in a good way. I think that's a need that we have downtown, especially for these workforce types. But certainly, we could have market rate pieces in there too. But that'll be, that'll come as it develops.
Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. Maybe I have a hard time conceptualizing the size of the garage right now, but this seems a lot bigger.
It is.
Can you compare the size of what we have now to what this is? Because I know we're going back and forth to the different levels, too. How many floors will this be?
Well, this is, right now, we're in the development piece, but we envision it to be probably 12,000. to be probably ten to twelve levels. So, it would be significantly taller than the building that's there now. Right now, we're, we're in a five-story building. It's a double helix garage. And understand, for your question, Commissioner, my understanding from the engineers is that building is not retrofittable, so it needs to, it needs to be replaced or have significant changes to it. It's not reworkable.
I don't think we want to retrofit it.
Yeah, no, well, well, again, the interior of it is odd.
Right now, the City Hall space, old City Hall space is eight stories?
Exactly. And that's the reason that when we first started talking about this, and again, this precedes you, but when we had this conversation, we had five-story limits on those, on the old City Hall space, as this one is also. And we said, well, fabulous waterfront location, and to maximize the opportunities there and attract a good developer, which we got in Navarro, we, we increased that height to eight floors, and the thought process always was that because then this space becomes kind of an interior block. So, you're surrounded on all sides by taller buildings, even though the ones to the east are considered technically five stories. They're in fact very tall stories, and they're, they're more like eight-story tall buildings. When the new building gets built, you'll find that there's not a lot of height difference between those and the new building, which is eight. So, then we, the, the vision was that we would then pop up a building behind them that could see over them to the water. And the vision was always, you know how fabulous it is on the Great Lawn right now, so imagine the Great Lawn ten floors up. I mean, where do you want to be when the Fourth of July fireworks happen or anything else like that? Or when you're having a wedding reception or something like that, as good as it is in, in the, on the lake pavilion now, imagine it up there, so...
Oh, I would agree with that. When I first moved here, you know, I'm from East Coast Cocoa Beach area, there's restaurants, there's a lot to do on the water, and I naturally, when I came to West Palm, was like, where is that here? So, I do have a follow-up question, if I could. Do we, I mean, this looks so, I don't know that I want to say futuristic, but very progressive, and, you know, I love the concepts of it.
Futuristic is a good thing.
Okay, futuristic. Is there anything like this nearby or...
Yes.
Around that...
The, I would suggest, and you can kind of see a reference to it in the sketch here, it's got that kind of V trestle-shaped piece, and as a matter of fact, it's, you're looking at your train station there also. This is a kind of a, an easy design that is replicated in its highest form, my opinion, in Miami right now at eleven-eleven Lincoln Road. They've got a, an incredible, maybe the world's best parking garage down there. But what gives us the inspiration for a building like this is, right now, at eleven-eleven Lincoln Road, and it's on the Lincoln, it's on the west end of the Lincoln Road, whatever they call that thing, shopping area, they've, they've gone in there and they put some of their floors were double and triple heights, and some single heights, and the ramps are different, and they use that building for any number of, of social events. I've seen major black tie events and big dinners and fashion shows and all sorts of things in that garage, and it's, it's a wonderful open space, and I think this takes it to the next level. That's a completely open building. This building has a natural air conditioning airflow system through this helical coil that goes up the center of the building that will give it natural air conditioning and a whole different kind of a feeling to it. So, it's a, it's a, it is a cutting-edge piece. I'm, I'm pretty excited. But the closest thing is, look at eleven-eleven Lincoln Road, and, and, and it's somebody that started out to build a parking garage. It is a, it is a, it is a great building. It is a great building, and wins a lot of awards, you're right.
I think we have to erase the words parking garage and really make sure that we continue to refer to this as the Banyan Hub.
Right.
Commissioner Ryan?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. I have many, many concerns, but I'm going to focus specifically on the purposing of the space and the square footage that you defined. I do know that the YMCA does not have the resources to contribute, and I have met with their board and executive, not their executive, their current executive director, about what this might possibly look like. So, we've got a finite dollar amount listed on your presentation, and yet, we don't have a partner in this to help identify what really is the right mix. If, if we're doing housing in the workforce and affordable level, if we're doing this many thousand square feet in retail, is that the right number that is needed? And I think a developer who does the, takes the risk and provides the financing is going to want to have a great deal of input, or they're, they're going to want to do this. So, if you have a finite dollar amount in terms of what you think that this is going to need to move forward, I would think that you would want to bring in a developer as a partner long before you take us to the next step of trying to expend money for design. Because if you go through with the design as you have futuristically thought about, the realities may limit the ability to do what your vision is. And when you think about how this started, we need to do something with this garage. And when Van Allen came to us, or when you went to them, they really didn't want to do something for a garage. They wanted to do something more like this. And I think that if we're going to look at this futuristic vision, that we really need to bring in more residents, more people, more input from the entire city, because it's not just the downtown that will be impacted by this. And then finally, I just want to say that when I see fifty million dollars, I think of roads, I think of infrastructure, I think of pipes, I think of repair, I think of all seawalls and all of the things that we really need to shore up before the infrastructure on top. And I think that if you start this in a design, you can get there over time, but I don't understand why this fifty-million-dollar price tag is defined as something that we need to commit to right now.
Thank you. You know, I think as, as we move forward, all of those things will happen. We just need to let John know if we want him to move forward.
Right.
Commissioner Neary, you got a question?
No, did you want to say? Well, I was just going to make a point that, one of the reasons that we're talking about this today is because we've been having this, as we just finished our budget session, we had this conversation about this bond that we've had a conversation about going forward with, and the majority of the projects, not the majority of the money, but the majority of projects are road projects, which we'll define later. And then there were two items on the bond, one of which is the potential for the Banyan Hub, and the other is a waterfront, waterfront improvements. And in the film early, you saw some of those kinds of things. So, the vision, the budget that we've already outlined for the bond is twenty-three million for this building and potentially ten million for improvements to the waterfront. The, so that's, that's kind of the number thing. Of course, the fifty million is, is the private sector.
Thank you. Commissioner Neary?
Yeah, so just, it's a question and a comment, and part of it is, you know, none of us, you know, obviously have a crystal ball, and we can't allow the prospect of change to paralyze us, but the reality is, we, we are going to have a new administration. This day is going to look a lot different in five months. So, my question is, between now and that time, what are we earmarking toward? Again, I'm supportive of, we all know that something, you know, I love the hub prospect, I love the, the thought of thinking about it in that holistic way, ensuring that it maintains a space that anyone who visits downtown or lives in the city has access to it. I'm all for that. Those are very, very fundamental aspects to this. But the reality is, again, this, we'll have, and not rushing it, Mayor, but we're, we're going to have a new administration. And so, could you just talk, again, I don't know, it's a tough question, but I think it's an important one.
Well, the reason that, one of the reasons we're having the conversation today, and Commissioner Ryan is absolutely right, is, as we, as we engage in a public-private partnership, the, the partner is, is going to have a lot of input into what happens in the building and what the, what the programming is, how much, how much gets built, what gets built, what doesn't get built. So, that's a, that's a big question mark, how much they're prepared to invest in it and all the rest, this kind of thing. The only reason we're talking about it today is that we're in a fluid market with interest rates going up weekly. If we're going to do the bond, we need to do the bond. We'd like to anticipate doing the bond before the end of the year. And if we're going to do that, I'm trying to identify projects that we have asked for funding. So, I want to make sure that you understand that we've earmarked a portion of that bond, twenty-three million, for this kind of project, or whatever goes there. But that sort of a thing. And ten million of the bond is for waterfront improvements. And understand, I am not talking about Flagler Shore. I'm talking about hardening and interesting things that make it a more attractive area and that sort of thing, which are not defined yet. But, you know, as long as we're doing the bond, we need to, we need to do it while it's financially good timing for us. So, that's, that's the thought process. That's the only, there, is there a hope to keep moving forward with refinement of the design on this thing? No. Five months doesn't make any difference to that at all. It's just that we do need to move forward with the bond piece. Now, obviously, we could, we could do more than one bond. I don't know what the bond rates are going to be in the future either, but that'll be up to you. So, I just want you to know that during the conversation for the budget, everybody kept saying, what are these items? What are these items? And we hadn't had time to get in front of you with this significant game changer, and I want to show it to you. Here's what it is, here's what we have in mind, and that's what that twenty-three billion-dollar place...
So, I think the critical part is that we want to move forward with the bond. Mr. Green, can you talk to us a little bit about why it's important at this point and what we need to do?
Well, I mean, John, you know, commented on it in part in that the rates are going up. This is a good environment for us to issue a bond if that is where we want to move forward. The question is, you know, are these projects solid enough that everyone's comfortable moving forward? If so, then we need to issue a bond. I think it's in our interest to issue a bond before the end of the year with rates good. It's just a question of, are these projects, are the projects that, that are out there, do we get enough support from the commission that they feel comfortable moving forward on that basis? I think it's, you know, it's either going to be a portion or all of them. It's just, that's kind of why we're having this discussion.
So, we need your consensus as to whether to move forward with the bond. Commissioner Ryan?
I have a, sort of a different proposal, and that is that we move forward with the bond as defined with the infrastructure-specific work in which the engineering has been established to get the road work done on Banyan Boulevard, and that you incorporate a component of that for the design, because ideally, what we want is private industry to cover the majority of this cost, to have the private investment carrying this forward.
Yeah, but we're only going, only part of the bond that would be in the bond would be the public investment, the twenty-three million, so we're not putting the whole eighty-three million in the bond.
But, but wouldn't we want to design that first and figure out what that number is before we actually go out and try to, you know, fit backwards what it is that you, we don't even know, I, I do know what you want on the waterfront, depending upon how far it goes into. There are other agencies that will be at the table. And so, whether or not this idea of twenty-three million will cover those costs, and you go out for an RFP, and you find a developer, and then they come back and find out that they can't do that. The City Hall site was a five-year-plus process, so I don't see us losing anything by just accessing enough funds to start your design, your public comment, but move forward with significant bonds to do the infrastructure of the streets that we've been looking at for the last couple of years.
Well, I don't want the, I don't want the bond conversation to, the bond conversation is obviously a piece of this, but I don't want the bond conversation to take your eye off the ball here. We started thinking about what the downtown waterfront could look like and the kind of improvements that we're making. Ecosystema is also working on our alleyway projects as well and some other things too. We were focused on the development of a new, significant piece of infrastructure for the city in this building, if you want to go forward with it. If you, if it is an attractive thing, if you feel it brings something to the, to the city that you want to do. So, we need to support that as well because we're a couple of years into this project as well. So, we've got...
And, and money.
Bond's a piece of it.
And money into this project.
Yes.
We've been spending money on this as well. I, I think, John, I think I heard four people say they thought this was an exciting and future-looking venture, and that we should move forward with it. Yes? Commissioner James?
I, I think. What does moving forward with it entail at this juncture?
Well, Commissioner, we're, we're at the point now where we've got, we have a product or a beginning point to start talking with partners about. I've shown, I've shown very preliminary drawings on this to a couple of developers, you know, months ago, but now we're at the point where we've got something that's actually something that they can start analyzing. You know, I like this, but I don't like that. Here's what I want. I want more of that. I want less of this. I don't think I've got enough money, buh, 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 that sort of thing. So, we can, we can start actually having significant, meaningful conversations to develop a partner, which we hadn't, you know, you, you have to have something to show them before you can get started. So, we're there with that.
So, the choice of a private partner will be done through the RFP process or Request for, Qualify RFQ process?
Yes.
At some point?
Yes.
So, we're just having preliminary conversations, conceptual conversations?
I think we're going to talk for another year anyway, and it could be longer than that. Strictly, again, conceptually having conversations, there are people that want to be in the marketplace. Well, what have you got in the marketplace? Well, typically, we show them dirt. That's right, that's right around. Well, here's an empty lot, here's an empty lot, let's tear this building down, buh, 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 that's, that's, that's that. In this particular instance, we've got another thing to show them. We've got a fabulous concept to show you. Do you like it? Is it something you want to invest in? Is it something you think is appropriate? How would you change it?
And a quick follow-up, Mayor, and then how does the timing of that conversation jive with the timing and decision points for the bond?
They're apples and oranges. We need to, the bond needs to move forward one way or the other, in whatever form we take it, in whatever amount we do. If we eliminate this, if this is not something we want to show support for, then we won't bond it now. If you do, we need to go, go ahead and get the...
We'll have a separate workshop on the bond itself at some point.
Yes. Yeah, today is not a bond workshop.
Right, okay.
Today is, let me tell you what these projects are kind of thing, because there's no way without a major presentation I can show you even what's envisioned. So, yeah. And, and just like the road work, we've got, we've got the roads illustrated that we need to spend money on. Some of them are the rest of the Clematis developments, some of them are Banyan rebuilding that, a number of buildings, a number of streets. And all we have with that is the definition of this road to this road. Now, do we have the drawings done? No. Is the design finished? No, it is not. We know pretty much how much it costs you to do a running mile of roadway, and here's what we need to do.
And it's really the way we, the way we do everything.
Yes.
We put a number in a budget that we think will pay for the road.
Right.
And if it doesn't, then we make design changes. If it does, that's fine. I mean, that's how we budget all of our, our capital improvement projects. Commissioner Shoff?
Thank you, Mayor. So, just so that we clarify the conversation today, the conversation today is to reach consensus of moving forward in looking at various aspects of the Banyan Hub, as they may or may not come to fruition, depending on what the private sector says, depending on what the legislature says.
Do you think we're nuts here? Is this, do you think we're nuts, or can we keep moving forward or not?
Sure. And so, doing that visioning process and moving forward to seeing what the potentials could be is something that I'm very much in support of.
Yes.
And then, at a future point, we'll take a look to see after those conversations how much of the funding would come from a potential bond, as well as other projects which you'll bring before the commission to tell us about that would be potentially part of a bond.
We may not have the numbers down specifically before we get to the bond, but we're going to have to go for the bond at some point, and the sooner the better. And if that, if, if those numbers aren't exact, then that means we have to make some changes.
But today's conversation...
Like we do everything.
Sorry, Mayor. Today's conversation is just a consensus of moving forward for this visioning process. Thank you.
Commissioner Ryan?
So, for this next presentation with, as it relates to the bonds in terms of what Mr. Green will bring forward to explain what's going out for, what you're going... So, if a project such as this is included in a bond amount and yet is determined to be infeasible, impractical, or otherwise completely changed in the scope and plan, impractical, or otherwise completely changed in the scope and plan, what does that do to the liability of the city? And so if we've got bonds obligated, how are we underwriting that repayment? Is it something that the city's general revenue budget will, will have to guarantee?
Well, that's, that's the discussion that we want to have. We need to understand how, how committed this project is. We'll go back and work that up and we'll try and build flexibility. If we decide that we want to bond this twenty-three million dollars in December, we'll have to have flexibility in the language so that, you know, for the contingencies that you've talked about and we'll have to work through that with the bond advisors as well.
Yeah, if I could too, the answer is that we have already anticipated going out for the eighty-million-dollar bond. You'll recall when we had the budget conversation and we've already factored in the bond payments in future TIF payments. So the bond will be covered by TIF going forward. We're anticipating that that would, we anticipated that that would happen when we developed the budget.
I, I think her question was, what happens if for whatever reason this project doesn't happen? What happens to that twenty million? We, we need to build flexibility if, into it if this is not a solid project at that time so that we have that flexibility to reallocate those funds.
To invest it in an appropriate project.
To some extent. And we'll have them, I, I don't want to do that because this is not the proper form, but we'll have a workshop and we'll go through that in more detail.
And, and I was just following, to follow up, was not necessarily the TIF, but in terms of the, when you do the underwriting and the compliance, the guarantee is going